I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. And we are going into closed session, and our city attorney will... Do we have some revisions?
Correct, Mayor Cabralis. First, there are three potential litigation items that are on the regular agenda, and in addition to that, we have two items that we're asking to be added as urgency items pursuant to Government Code 54954.2B2. In order to do that, you have to make a finding that these items arose after the posting of the agenda and there's immediate need with respect to the bankruptcy case that is listed on the agenda. It is a bankruptcy case number 0912526, District of Delaware Basin Water, Inc. As of last Friday, we received information and a glitch with respect to the potential settlement, and we have a filing deadline of this Thursday, so there's immediate need to get some direction from the council as to how to proceed. With respect to the other, we received information, I think it was also late Friday, about the potential threat of litigation to the city, and there's an immediate need to take some direction in order to respond to that immediately. We have a motion to add those two items based on those findings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to call to convene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. And we do have a report on the closed session.
Yeah, Cabralis, there is no reportable action as a result of the closed session items, both the three and the two added items.
As is customary, we'll have the invocation to begin with, and that will be given by Pastor Ray Gimme from Jubilee Community Church. That will be followed also by a pledge of allegiance by our police chief, Cliff Reynolds.
Father, as we begin a new year, we ask your blessing to rest upon our city. We ask your blessing to rest upon our council members, and your blessing upon our lives. We ask you to guide us through this meeting tonight to allow your wisdom to be known and your will to be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
By the United States of America, public or registered?
Foundation, hundred, five, ten, eleven, seventeen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight,
The first item is the public comment, and that will be for the City Council and all the authorities in the district. And the people wishing to speak have three minutes. And I do have one court on item number one. This is Melinda Mindy Torres.
Hello. My name is Mindy Torres. Good evening. It's my first time here. What brought me here this evening is I'm very concerned about the crime in our neighborhood. I've worked at the same dental office, Liberty Village Dental Care, for 16 years. Recently, I had found some items behind the trash can that looked like it may have been a crime scene for a child. I found some panties and some pants that had been taken off, and a torn skirt. I called the police about 11:15, and they never came to look at those items. I called the watch commander five times. They never came the whole day. A police officer did come, but he didn't look at those items. I said, "Deputy Peterson, you didn't come in once to even look at those items." So... I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous right now, but I'm very concerned about that child. I don't know if there was a crime or not, but I've never seen anything like that. And it was a size 10, slim. I have the items here in case there's a police officer that might want to look at it. But I'm very concerned for our kids in our neighborhood. I see a lot of drug activity. I'm the office manager at our office, and there's several times when, you know, the boom-boom-boom cars are coming by, they're shaking our building, and our patients are inside, our computers are shaking. I go outside, I call the police, I tell the people, "Please turn your music down," and I'm afraid of them. But I'd really appreciate if we could get some kind of help from the police, because it doesn't seem as though I'm getting any help. There's kids that are jumping the fence behind us. The homes behind are destroyed with graffiti on inside. And kids are coming to the smoke shop next door to us, and I'm afraid that... I'm really concerned about what they're doing over there. Another thing is at the grocery store, the store employees at State or Brothers, they're not able to stop anybody from committing a crime. I would say about 90% when I go there, there's a crime of kids stealing alcohol, so on and so forth. And that's all I pretty much have to say. But I wanted it to be known, and if somebody would like to help, please, please do it. And I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, Mindy. Thank you for sharing your concerns, and our police chief, as in the audience, and he'll make contact with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next agenda is the Library Board of Trustees. Have no revisions. We'll go into the Southern California Logistics...
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
The consent calendar should show us on the screen.
The voting results aren't showing on the screen.
Eric, you made the motion.
Make it again?
Yes.
Second.
I just place showed the vote.
Yes, but it still goes back to the consent calendar instead of going into the other agenda, so we're trying to get that fixed.
There it is.
Okay. Now, next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, and also the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, and those are chaired by Councilwoman Caldwell, and he'll chair those.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. Item three on the rail authority is the consent calendar.
Who for approval?
Second. Item four is the request to approve the disclosure of actual conflict and client consent to multiple representation of the city, the Logistics Airport Authority, the rail authority, Redevelopment Agency, and the City Council. Mayor Cabralis, these are companion items for SCLA-A number four, RDA number four, City Council number nine. If you want, I'll take them all concurrently with this item.
Mayor...
With regard to item four, are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Yes, I have one. I would appreciate if Andre could just please give us a brief explanation.
Certainly.
I know you're an attorney, but we need a brief explanation.
This is essentially a housekeeping item. We were... Our firm was involved in the formation of the RCVD, which is the advisory body in connection with the EB5 program. That body essentially will be making recommendations as to how funds should be appropriated. And to some extent, they are, in fact, governed by separate entity other than the city, although they are city employees that are the governing body. And ultimately, the control rests with this city council as to who sits on that board. But anytime we represent entities that are separate legal entities by definition, in order to do that, state bar rules require that we get a consent to the waiver of potential conflicts, although there probably are going to be no actual conflicts. It's basically a catch-all provision, a housekeeping item, so that we can represent all of those entities. If, in fact, a significant conflict was to come up, we would bring it to your attention, and at that point, you can replace us and bring in separate council. But this is sort of a catch-all housekeeping item, so that you're aware that we are representing multiple agencies, all of whom are governed by essentially the city council, but they act in separate roles, and to the extent there would be a potential conflict, you're aware of that.
There's one other thing that caught my eye this time, Andre, is you would also be representing the regional center?
Correct. That is the RCVD is the regional center. That is the advisory board to the regional center. So that's why we have put this on the agenda, to allow us to represent them as well.
Add that as an additional...
Correct. That's essentially what we're doing here, is adding them to the other entities, because they're going to be... Again, that's the body made up that's going to be advising and making recommendations as to how those other entities expend the funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, a motion for the rail authority agenda, item four, the Redevelopment Agency, item four, the City Council number nine, in conjunction with this one as well would be in order.
Second.
Airport Authority agenda, item three is the consent calendar. Order for approval?
Second.
Authority dispensed with item four. Item five is a request to approve a loan agreement, buy-in between the Victorville Regional Center and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. This is with the EB5 program. Questions or comments from members of the council? Not a motion would be in order.
Second.
Item six, request to approve a use agreement with the Boeing Company for use of the SCLA flight test of the Boeing 787 Dreamliner. Questions or comments from members of the council?
Just an observation that this is some work Jim Worsham was directly involved in.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I did want to at least address that we are pleased and excited to bring this item to your attention. This program with Boeing will enable three 787 aircraft to be tested at SCLA. It's fairly noteworthy, because I think of the test aircraft that Boeing will be flight testing, three of them are here of a total program of five. I won't steal too much of Mr. Worsham's thunder, as he was the initial lead in actually procuring this transaction, and we're actually expecting resulting from this that there's further opportunity with respect to the 747-800 program. But I did want to point out to you specifically that this item was among the group of items that we specifically sought for Mr. Worsham to pursue on our behalf. And as I advised this board when it approved Mr. Worsham's contract previously, that we would be structuring the deals in such a way that they weren't direct impacts on the actual operating budgets of the airport. This transaction has been structured that way, and has been structured in such a way where Boeing has advanced funding costs and putting to use some resources of the city, in fact, that would otherwise be a cost or a drain to the city's coffers. So with that, I'm pleased to present this to you. I'm seeking your approval. And Mr. Worsham is here, as you've noted, and he's certainly available to maybe go into greater detail about the flight test program.
Questions or comments from members of the council? I would just say that, as usual, Mr. Worsham is worth his weight in gold, most of what has happened at George Air Force, former George Air Force Base, direct result of Mr. Worsham's efforts and his skill and his tentacles throughout the aviation industry. On behalf of the city and SCLA, Jim, I just want to say thank you for, once again, doing yeoman's work. It's really great. Motion would be in order?
For approval?
Thank you.
Then item seven, change orders three and four to the Butzko Utility Design, total amount $51,300 for additional services on the design coordination of the innovation phase for dry utility design contract. Questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Caldwell. I'd like to know who initiated these change orders on three and four? Was it the company? Or did we do that?
Good evening, mayor and council. The change orders were initiated by the engineering department as far as moving forward with some interim design work for the Dr. Pepper facility.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking, Sean, is because the original contract price was $68,000.
That's correct.
And we've just doubled it to $132,000?
Right. To explain that, what was originally contemplated was that we would be designing a complete backbone system and using grant monies to build that. The grant monies were not forthcoming in a timeframe that was going to meet the Dr. Pepper schedule, so we initiated additional design services to bring in an independent electrical feed so that Dr. Pepper could stay on schedule, but at the same time, we would follow it up using plans that have already been designed. That was the original contract, for a complete backbone system that would serve the whole western side of SCLA, and use grant funds then to pay for that infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would note that the article in today's Daily Press, I believe it was today, pointed out that the Dr. Pepper Snapple project was the only real significant project that was instructed in the entire county of San Bernardino. So that shows the worth of that project in terms of job creation and economic opportunity. Motion would be in order?
Aye.
That completes both the airport and the rail authority agendas.
Next, we have the Victorville Redevelopment Agency agenda. We don't have any revisions. Item number three is consent calendar.
For approval?
Second. And four?
We've taken action on number four. We're going to item number five, as a request to approve an amendment, number one, to the memorandum of understanding, or MOU, buy-in between Victorville Redevelopment Agency and JDP Investment Company.
Move approval?
Yep.
Item number six, request to authorize staff to modify terms of an affordable housing agreement with Pacific West Companies, Inc., for the development of multi-family housing community.
Approval?
Next is the Victorville Water District agenda. There are just a minor revision to the agenda. We're going to take and reverse item three and four, and those are also item number three is in companion with item number six with the City Council agenda, and item number four is a companion with item number seven of the City Council agenda. These are public hearing items. And we'll open up the public hearing on the Northen Sphere expansion. This is item number seven on the City Council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members. I'm pleased to say that today's Daily Press article was correct in regards to the city's three-year struggle to comply with the LAPCO Municipal Service Review. In 2007, the city submitted a sphere of expansion to LAPCO. Shortly afterwards, Hellendale did the same. Unfortunately, as you know, there was a large overlap between the two proposals. Staff has worked diligently to comply with LAPCO's request for resolution, which included a mutually agreed upon boundary with Hellendale, and Adelanto's consent for the inclusion of approximately 800 acres north of SCLA. After numerous attempts at compliance, LAPCO directed staff to meet with Hellendale and reach an agreement. We did so. Several months ago, with the representative from the county supervisor's office present, city and Hellendale staff negotiated a proposed compromise. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the compromise map that resulted from that meeting, as well as others that followed with the city of Adelanto. The map shown on your screen is such plan. And what it does is it protects SCLA from residential encroachment on the west side by absorbing or transferring some of the Adelanto land and creating a larger buffer for the airport. And that is shown in the blue hedge with yellow background. It also includes the entire desert gateway specific plan with a significant buffer around that to protect it in the future. It maintains the Oregrand and TXI community as one, and it creates no county islands or peninsulas. Then, two weeks ago, we were surprised to receive the LAPCO proposal, which in our minds does not provide significant protection for SCLA. As you can see on the proposal above, what we have done, we have drawn in the black line, which is the Hellendale-Victorville compromise proposal, just so they have an understanding between the two maps of where they fall, their proposal is, and where our boundaries that we agreed upon are. If you look over SCLA to the left of it or to the west, you will see that the blue hedge of the Hellendale sphere comes down one section further. And let me show you a similar map that we proposed. If you look over there, you can see the yellow section and the blue section above SCLA on the left. Sorry about that. And there, you can... I asked to use this one tonight instead of the handheld. There you can see that what we've got is we've got Adelanto's piece still there, and even if the agreement with Adelanto went through, Hellendale then comes down even closer. Our concern, of course, is not in that area, is not for development, although Hellendale has no current plans to build this out, obviously. But in the future, we never know, and we want to, having experienced this issue with other airports throughout the country, we want to provide as large a zone, protection zone around the airport as possible, which we don't feel this proposal does. Additionally, as you can see by the wide area in the middle, it creates a large county island, which we have been, again, diligently working with the county to comply with their request to absorb county islands. Our point is, we can absorb that at this point within our sphere, and Hellendale can absorb part of it to the north with our recommended proposal, leaving absolutely no county islands there and protecting, while protecting SCLA. Finally, regarding the county supervisor's concerns noted in today's Daily Press article, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Staff finds that our recommendation does, in fact, protect the mineral resources at least as well as the county for the following reasons. Through our adopted general plan, the city has already designated the surrounding areas, areas surrounding TXI as low-density residential, just as currently zoned by the county itself. In fact, we reduced the current residential zoning by 1,350 acres, thus protecting the mineral resources and industry we feel better than currently zoned by the county. Second, much of the area is already protected as its open space through both BLM ownership and the West Mojave Habitat Conservation Plan. Therefore, no building can or will result, at least in the near future, in one-third or so of this entire area. And finally, the criticism directed at overdevelopment of the area is based upon a conceptual plan for the area prepared by TRED. I believe that the supervisor's comments in the large amount of commercial and high-density residential or residential development surrounding this area or within this area itself has to do with a map that has been presented by TRED, which is a conceptual build-out in that whole area outside of the gateway specific plan, which is, for all practicality, a bubble diagram that we have seen, but the city has not formally reviewed, nor has this council formally seen or endorsed by any means. In fact, staff has several concerns with the amount of development that that private developer has proposed, at least in draft plans. Again, there has been no submittal of sorts. And again, regardless of the plan, the city currently proposes to mimic the county's current zoning in that entire area. In closing, I just want to let the council know that I've been assured by both Hellendale and Adelanto representatives that they are ready to act upon a motion to support the compromise plan following tonight's action, independent upon that. We have been working with them. We appreciate their cooperation greatly. Both communities have done what we've done. A compromise is not necessarily what any one of us wanted. We've been battling this thing for several years, and we decided to comply and to work with under LAPCO's direction, basically, and the county supervision, and as I said, even the county representative attending and present in the compromise meeting, and rather find a compromise. Like I said, everyone doesn't get everything that they wanted. But the most important issues here are the protection of SCLA and protection of the area around the gateway specific plan, not just the immediate area, but to leave a hole in that area for the future allows for potential encroachment later on down the line, whether it's Hellendale or another community, and not the current leaders, but future leaders. And so that's what we're presenting tonight, is a compromise plan. It's before you, as I stated. We feel that we have done so, worked well with the adjoining communities, and feel good about the fact that we have done everything that we can to comply with LAPCO's direction, as well as the county supervisor's direction, up until this map, this other map was presented two weeks ago. That concludes the presentation.
Mr. Mayor?
Question, mayor and council?
Mr. Mayor and council. I would like to add that the administration's been involved in working with our planning staff, engineering staff. We did, in fact... We did, in fact, meet with the Hellendale Community Services District twice. We met in an attempt to work out the agreements, and we felt that all the agreements had been worked out. And the local agency, Formation Commission, the administration wanted this submitted to the city council for a formal action. I searched my emails today after reading the paper to find the specific reasons why the, the county checks, and I don't have any emails. I'm assuming that possibly the supervisors communicated directly with some of the council members. But the other concern that I want to, to bring to the council's attention is that at the last council meeting, the city council discussed the recycling facility located just off, dotted Wells Road, and with a meeting to be held with Apple Valley to make sure that we were in agreement. And because of the holidays and other issues that I need not go into, the earliest meeting that we could have with Apple Valley is tomorrow. I did speak with Scott Nassif today. He indicated that they had received information indirectly in regard to the expansion of the recycling facility. It was brought to my attention earlier in the day by a staff member that there was a concern in regard to the future expansion of that facility and bonding, and therefore requesting, was it possible to continue this item for two weeks in order for Apple Valley and Victorville to meet and make a final determination of whether it's going to be affected or not? I talked to the attorney to determine what we need to do to make sure that we do not accidentally step on someone's toes or have unintended consequences. And as a result of that, we, we do need some time because of the delays in having the meeting with Apple Valley. So I'm requesting that this matter be continued for two weeks. And as an aside, that will allow the council, our council member, the mayor, if they deem necessary, to meet with Supervisor Mittenfeldt to determine what his concerns may be of the other property to the north.
Mr. Cox, if I may, I, I believe that that issue is more pertinent to the consent calendar, which is the city council item eight E, I believe it is on the consent calendar.
It is.
I'm not sure if you want it to apply to this one as well, but those are separate items, and that would be, staff was going to recommend
Yes.
That item eight E be continued.
I just felt that it was tied together and that, that was appropriate to bring all these issues to the forefront at this time. But you're correct, it is, it is more directed to the other item, but it, I felt it, because of the potential expansion, that it could be affected, and I tied it all together for council's information on that.
Very good. And, and based upon this map here in the white zigzag area on the right, that's basically the, the outline of the gateway specific plan, and that was what was adopted several weeks ago, and it's up for its second reading tonight. Although within part of our sphere, and although some of the areas overlap, the specific issue itself does not necessarily pertain to this item's action, but does however, as stated, pertain to item eight, and the request from staff is, is as stated, a continuance of that item for two weeks, which is just the second reading of the gateway specific plan.
Any questions from council?
Well, I'm confused. I thought I heard a request to continue item seven, which is the map that's before us. And Mr. DeBortnowsky raised the issue of eight E from the consent calendar. Are we now asking to continue both of those items or just eight E and act on this independently?
Because of the concern on the other item and the request to continue it, and because of the gateway specific plan that we believe indirectly affects this, but not directly, the council could, could proceed with this, because the questions that have been raised that we need to meet with Apple Valley, and separately, we assume, based upon the newspaper article, that the supervisor has raised questions, that was the only reason to continue this, or the potential to continue both items. Definitely the other item, definitely the gateway specific plan. The question is up to the council, whether or not they're ready to proceed on this item, or whether or not they feel that that also should be continued, if they need to have a discussion from the supervisor in regard to why he is opposed to this one moving ahead. But I can't speak if that's an actual official position or not. That's why I suggested that you may want to delay it.
We up against any deadlines?
If I can clarify, uh, the MRF itself is in the city currently. So that issue is, although connected in an overlap that there's a specific plan that contains it, and this specific plan does overlap into the area that we're talking about tonight, the MRF directly is not affected by this action. As far as the deadlines, we were asked to, to submit our application, to revise our map and submit by January. I know that representatives from LAPCO have said now they are continuing or requesting to continue the item to April. However, as I stated, our, our partners in this, both the city of, both the city of Adelanto and the, the district of Hellendale, community district, have both agreed and agendized this item for the next couple of weeks. And, and therefore, they were, they're, they themselves are waiting for our action on this item. So we, I would like to just note that, that I feel completely secure and safe continuing or acting upon this item tonight, continuing the other for two weeks, as the MRF is not in the sphere expansion area that we are proposing tonight.
I think, I think that makes sense. This is, this is the northern part of, beyond the city. This is the sphere
Yes.
Expansion, and your, your MRF sits already in, in, in existing cities.
Yes, and if I can explain that worst-case scenario, if we find that the bonding is linked to the, to the use of the MRF on a separate issue on item eight, we will then revise that and rezone or redesignate it or change the permitted uses and do a quick fix to that, and that'll be back a few weeks after the, the two weeks that, that we, that city manager Cox has, has requested a continuance on item eight. So that will be taken care of and will be a clean fix once we meet with Apple Valley, as he stated, and, and go over that. But this can be acted upon independently.
Any other question?
I've got a number of things. First thing I need to do is bring up city map. I'll refer to it as the city map and the LAPCO map, for lack of a better
Yes.
Name, free to, give me the city map first, please.
There's the city map.
I mean, on my computer. Oh, well, you can see it up there, too.
I, I don't know.
This is, this is a perfectly legitimate land use decision map. I mean, it is, it, it runs through all the gamut of, of requirements that law requires of local government to be able to deliver services to a region. It's not just a bunch of rectangles that smoothly flow together to smooth out the boundaries of the city. There's a lot of thought put into those lines. The Hellendale Special District up there, our County Service District up there, some hundred square miles, I'm not sure what it is, some 6,000 people live in that community, 6,000, 10,000 in that residential area there, and it's unincorporated. They've got all the, all the access they need to both the 395 and the 15 from here. There's not one thing that diminishes from them continuing to live in that lifestyle and to grow in that lifestyle there, and if they want to become a city someday, great. But when you expand their sphere of influence, you also expand the notion that they can deliver the services outside of that sphere of influence. So, I mean, this map, to me, makes sense. It expands our ability to move north and up the freeway corridor and to allow the potential growth for future councils to deal with, and it's not all going to happen next year, next 10 years. It's going to happen over the next 20, 25 years. But you certainly don't want to cut off that opportunity for a city with the resources and the ability to, to deliver those services that way. So this map, in my opinion, does all of those things and ought to be approved by LAPCO. Unfortunately, politics and property owners have different wishes, and so if you'll bring up the second map, the LAPCO, what we'll refer to as the LAPCO compromise, a number of things are involved here, but the most salient one is the black, bold line that you see there with the notes, the, off to the right and left. That is a compromise where we pull back down a bit on our sphere, and we then begin, the purple properties there are what we're actually going to intend to bring in in an active development phase of the city. The white region in the middle there is predominantly TXI's property, and they, they drive that boat. If they want to stay with the county, they're the property owners, they will stay with the county. If they want to come with the city, they would come with the city, and neither one of us, the county or the city, could tell them otherwise. So it's almost, it's almost irrelevant not to want to speak for anybody from TXI, but it's almost irrelevant for us to insist on the line of them being incorporated or not being incorporated into that process. So with that in mind, and with the fact that the revenue flows that come out of that, the 50% that comes into the airport anyway, will still be there, that hole is something that I can live with. From a planning, strictly from a planning point of view, probably not a good idea, but the fact is that that's what they want, and that's what we ought to allow the, the property owner to address. So the major hole in the middle is, is no problem with me, if that's the way we're going to modify it in that respect. With respect to the pullback lines, it gives us a significant amount of development up to the blue, is it the blue line there?
Yes. On this one that you're talking about now, this is the blue line. If I can just make a clarification, because we don't have the exact map that you were talking about first, just for everyone's sake. The first map you're talking about was our initial proposal, which included the red diagonals above the blue, directly above the blue, and that triangular leg. That is the one that, that you stated was the map that, that you would support
Right.
If, 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 if you could have exactly what you want and what we initially support, what we initially proposed. And then, I'm sorry, and then if you continue, what we're talking about now is, as is, with the blue and the red area kind of divided in half.
That's correct. You go back to my other map now. That's the one I'm, I'm speaking.
And this, and this is actually the, the LAPCO proposal that they, that LAPCO proposed.
Well, and, and coupled with that is that you, we've got the city of Victorville, Adelanto, and, and speak for themselves, but their county service area folks are all agreeing with this compromise line.
On this, on this map, they were agreeing, actually.
Yeah.
Which, which is, which, which covers the hole.
Okay, we'll flip back to the other one. All right. So I'm suggesting that we adopt this compromise map begrudgingly, but, and we allow for that process to, to continue and develop. I still object to, and will continue to object to, the, what you might call the dog leg off to the right there, the Hellendale-Victorville agreement boundary line. I disagree with that expansion of Hellendale's sphere of influence for very good reason. They'll, in anybody's lifetime, they're not going to have the resources to, to deliver those services. What you're creating there is basically a no-growth dead zone along a freeway corridor. To me, that's wrong, and, and I, I, I have trouble supporting that is an issue there in the compromise. Nevertheless, I'm not going to be the one to jump on board and say, let's kill the whole thing if we can get the major developments, which is TRED coming in and giving a significant development area there, and SCLA, a bit of buffer in there, there, we'll do whatever fights we need later on with LAPCO. But from my opinion, that, that compromise, I, I can live with. I haven't said all the things that are running through my head, but those, those are the salient ones that I think are important on the freeway corridor and the TXI properties.
Other comment?
I have some.
Go ahead.
This map with the red and the blue
Correct.
Is the map that Hellendale, Adelanto, and Victorville would be acting on in the next
Couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Correct.
And this is the product of the compromise of the discussion between those three entities and at least presence of the county.
Correct.
Well, I'm prepared to support it. I mean, like Councilman Rothschild, there are parts of it that I wish were different, but it, it accomplishes my primary goal of ensuring the protection of Southern California Logistics Airport. That's an important issue for me, just as was reported in the paper today, and I commented a little while ago. Economic activity in the Victor Valley is centered at former George Air Force Base, Southern California Logistics Airport. Every good thing that happens out there produces benefits for all of us, for every community and every unincorporated area, benefits from the enhanced economic opportunities associated with unencumbered development of that base. So that's my primary concern, and I think it's addressed adequately, not as well as I would have liked it, but adequately. Another reason for supporting it, I think it's important that the communities in the Victor Valley work together and, and come up with their own solutions to knotty issues about turf, jurisdiction, and to have Hellendale and Adelanto and Victorville come together and, in the spirit of cooperation, give and take and leave something on the table, to come up with a united position, is the best form of government that you could hope for, as opposed to having something imposed by fiat from people who don't necessarily have to live with the end result. And so, you know, for all of us to come together and, and based upon my understanding that there are votes scheduled for Hellendale and for Adelanto, I, I'm prepared to support this. My vote would be a contingent vote in this sense, that if it turned out that for whatever reason, Adelanto and/or Hellendale and/or the county and/or LAPCO chose to change these lines and, and not go along with it, I, I would not want to be bound to something that I'm supporting because I, I support it in the spirit of compromise and give and take. So, Mr. Mayor, when it's time for, for votes, I, I want to make sure that the record reflects that my vote will be a contingent vote based upon that concept. And then lastly, I'd like to comment about the issue of the mining. And I, I think it's unfortunate that mining has become such a debated issue in this process. City of Victorville has an absolute strong, demonstrated commitment to protecting the mining interests in our community. What we now call CEMEX started out as Southdown before there was a city of Victorville, before we incorporated. This city has cooperated and coexisted with now CEMEX for almost 50 years of its corporate life, without acrimony, without concerns, without difficulties. And for anyone to suggest that Victorville is not competent and capable and sensitive in terms of the importance of the mining industry and, and protecting it is just simply not a very good student of history. Mr. Cox, I remember in his prior tenure as the city manager, Southdown wanted to develop part of their property for an industrial park called River Something, I forget exactly the name, and they approached the city. Would we change zoning in order to accommodate their corporate vision to develop an industrial corridor unrelated to the mining industry? And we said yes, and we, in fact, did it. I also recall back in Mr. Cox's tenure, when we decided as a good neighbor to pave a road for Southdown, Southwest Portland. We have a significant mining operation on Highway 18, right at the Narrows, and we have not had any problems coexisting and working with those folks. So for those who want to make it sound like Victorville doesn't give a damn about the mining industry, I challenge them to come up with a better record than the city of Victorville has established during its almost 50 years of working and getting along with those neighbors. And then lastly, I want to comment about the fact that we have currently been involved in substantial discussions and negotiations with CEMEX and with Congressman McKeon in order to solve a knotty problem, again, with our sister city to the west. And it's much like, I think, what's happened here with Hellendale and Adelanto and Victorville. If reasonable people will sit down and have dialogue and give and take and realize that we're all in this together, and that if we come up with a good plan, we will all benefit from it, then I think we move away from people from it, then I think we move away from people generally say government doesn't listen and government doesn't care. This is a product of government listening and government caring, government compromising to come up with the best land use development scheme for the long-term future of the Victor Valley. That's why I'm going to support this.
Any other questions? Thank you. I will now open up the public hearing on the Northern Sphere Expansion, and this is item number four on the Water District Agenda and item number seven on the City Council Agenda. I do have a card here from Mark Ostoj.
Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Mark Ostoj. My address is 550 East Hospitality Lane in San Bernardino, and I'm here tonight on behalf of TXI Riverside Cement. Some of the earlier remarks were directed to them, so I'm glad we are here because we do want to engage in this discussion. I had turned a speaker slip in for the Sphere discussion on the City Council Agenda. It sounds like you're having that discussion now, so I'll make my comments now and later. If it is discussed again, I'll get up again and make some more comments. So thank you very much. I wanted to start out by saying that we appreciate your comments, council members, concerning the sensitivity of the City of Victorville to mining issues. And I can say without any reservation that TXI has no doubts whatsoever about the good faith and good intentions of the City of Victorville. We unfortunately have a disagreement about the impact of including TXI's over 4,000 acres in the sphere of the City of Victorville, and I'd like to direct my comments to that. As you know, TXI and its predecessors have been mining that property for over 100 years, and TXI has an active quarrying operation going on on that property today. In recent years, has invested almost $400 million in modernizing its cement plant at that location, all made in expectation of a long-term operating future at that site. We're very concerned about the impact of inclusion of the TXI properties and any of the surrounding properties in the sphere of influence of the City of Victorville. Now, it's not that we mistrust the city. We know your intention is to protect and preserve mining, and we don't want to suggest that you do not intend to do that. Our concern is that while we can resist physical annexation, as Councilmember Rothschild mentioned earlier, being within your sphere creates some dilemmas for us that no one can really deal with. One of those dilemmas is with the sphere of influence surrounding our properties, urbanization is invited. And even if our property doesn't become urbanized, the surrounding properties will ultimately become urbanized. Many of them may be annexed into the city. As that occurs, it's going to place our operation at risk. TXI unfortunately has a history in other locations of experiencing the situation where it was the first operator in, and over the period of time, urbanization encroached on its operation and ultimately placed its operation at risk. We don't want that to happen here. An additional concern we have about the sphere of influence change is that while we may not be physically within the city limits of the City of Victorville, any physical changes we want to make in the plant, although the County of San Bernardino would be our lead agency, there will be an obligation to consult with the City of Victorville. And there are, in my opinion, conflicts between the development standards of the County of San Bernardino and the development standards of the City of Victorville. This will impede our operation. And as I mentioned earlier, having spent almost $400 million in modernizing the plant, TXI does plan on being there for a long time. And to operate effectively and efficiently, it will make changes in future years in its operation. We see being within the city's sphere as being an impediment to that. Once again, I want to be clear, it's not because we feel the city has any bad intent or does not support the TXI operation. We see it really as a matter of how the law of land use would apply to our operations. So I want to clearly say that it's TXI's preference to remain in the County of San Bernardino, not within the City of Victorville's sphere of influence. We consider ourselves to be a good neighbor and will continue to be a good neighbor, but we feel that there is extreme risk to our present and future operations of any change of the sort that's being proposed. So we would urge you to embrace LAFCO's proposed boundaries and to exclude us from the sphere of influence, and that is really what I'm here to ask you for this evening. Now, I have a letter that I'm going to put in the record. I'm not going to read the letter into the record at this time, but the comments that it makes are very consistent with the comments that I just made. We are aware of the McKeon Bill that was recently reintroduced in the legislative process, and we feel that the impact of the McKeon Bill, it does solve a problem, as was pointed out for someone. Unfortunately, we feel that that problem could be solved at the expense of TXI's operation because we feel it could potentially actually accelerate the urbanization of this area and hasten this concern that I mentioned to you that we do have. So we thank you very much for your attention. Once again, I want to be clear that TXI harbors no resentment or ill will toward the City of Victorville. It just feels for the benefit of its property interests and its future operations that it's in its best interest to remain outside of the spirit of the city and within the County of San Bernardino. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can file the letter with the clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the Northern Sphere Expansion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, members of the council. My name's Kathleen Rawlings-McDonald, and I am the LAFCO administration that has been referred to in the discussions here today. And I'd like to simply clarify a couple of items regarding the presentation. The maps that were shown on the overhead display defined as the LAFCO maps are not the commission's maps. They are the LAFCO staff option to be reviewed and presented to the commission. They have not been reviewed with the commission. They have not been endorsed by the commission. They are a staff option to review and discuss the parameters that LAFCO must review in all considerations for sphere of influence expansion. In addition, regarding the proposal and the long-term, since 2007 process, I'd like to remind the council members that this sphere of influence expansion was removed or taken apart from the overall process for the consolidation of the Victorville, Victor Valley Water District, Baldi Mesa Water District, and the municipal service review for the city. It was discussed at that time that in order to review such an expansive change to the sphere of influence, there was a need to have the completion of the city's general plan update, which had been started and in process at that time. So it was the direction of the commission to remove this 57,000 or 58,000 acre sphere of influence expansion until such time as the city's general plan update was completed. That was completed in October of 2008. LAFCO staff met with the city staff in February of 2009 to review the updated materials that were needed in order to move forward. There has been statements made regarding LAFCO's direction to provide a compromise. LAFCO staff reviewed with the city staff concerns regarding the boundary, the concern regarding the extension above the City of Adelanto between Hellendale, and reviewed those concerns with city staff. There was never a direction or obligation from LAFCO staff to compromise. We simply acknowledged that there were issues and concerns. We asked and conveyed those to the city staff to review, and we are more than happy that compromise has been achieved with all the agencies. We were a bit surprised to learn about the City of Adelanto since we had received a letter during the Adelanto Municipal Service Review Sphere Update that they had rescinded their approval of the detachment of the 800 acres in their existing sphere territory along the west side of the Mojave River. But if that is in fact a compromise that has been worked out with the City of Adelanto, we're more than happy to include that in the process as we move forward to review your sphere of influence proposal that has been continued all this time. But I just, I wanted to clarify for the City Council some of those things that had been addressed in the presentation, and we're moving forward. The request for continuance was received by LAFCO staff from its commissioner, Commissioner Mittsfeldt. And it is in our practice, in order, whenever a commission member requests continuance, to honor that request. So the proposal has been continued to the April hearing of the commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the Northern Sphere Expansion? Very nice. I will close the public hearing, and I will ask our planning director to, any closing statements for the council?
No, I actually would just like to say I believe both speakers covered the issues that we already presented, and I appreciate the elaboration. I don't find it as a clarification of issues as presented by the LAFCO representative.
And the bottom line is the entities involved have all agreed to.
The, all three communities have agreed to it. Correct.
Thank you.
I should say, staff representatives from all three communities, they have not gone before the board or the council of Adelanto or Hellendale.
Mr. Webb, could you address the issue of if someone's within our sphere, that our land use policies would apply to them?
It's a courtesy provided by, I believe it's a courtesy on the county's part to route to the jurisdictions within the jurisdictions which have the sphere encompassing, but it is still county approval and county development guidelines or standards that the development will follow.
So we couldn't impose anything...
Not without the county's agreement to it.
They would have to take your comments and incorporate it in...
Conditions of approval or something.
...conditions of approval or whatnot.
Correct.
Because that was something that was stated by the representative for TXI that did not make sense to me, so I just wanted to clarify that.
If I may too, one more thing to add on to that is, remember with the sphere expansion, that is, that is the intention supposedly for all properties to come into local jurisdictions at some point in the future. Doesn't mean it's 10 years, 20 years, 50 years from now. At the time of annexation, when something is within the city sphere, that also goes before the same, before the same agency of LAFCO for approval. Must be approved by LAFCO before it is annexed to the city itself proper. So there's still another whole step before even an annexation anywhere down the line, which LAFCO oversees and has authority over.
Thank you. We have Resolution BWD 10-002 for the Water District and 10-003 for the City of Victorville.
Move approval of both resolutions.
With the contingencies that you previously...
As I stated before, at least for my vote, being contingent upon the other agencies following through with similar votes.
Is that part of the motion, or is that just going to be with respect to your vote?
It's not a part of the motion. That's just my vote. I mean, I don't know how anybody else feels, nobody commented, so...
Next item is the Code Road Annexation, and this is Victorville Water District Item Number Three and City Council Agenda Item Number Six, and we'll have a report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. These items are a request to approve the resolutions that will allow staff to submit the applications for annexation to LAFCO. This is the Code Road County Island. It's located off of Hisperia Road, just south of Green Tree Boulevard. The LAFCO likes to have unincorporated islands that are surrounded by cities to be annexed by those adjacent cities because they're inefficient for the county to provide them services. While we originally planned for the Code Road Annexation to go along with the Western Annexation, the Space Center parcel, six acres at the south end of Code Road, they went ahead and applied for annexation on their own as a private property owner. LAFCO approved that annexation in October and conditioned that annexation to be contingent upon the city's annexation of the remainder of the island. Therefore, this item is before you. As part of the process for the annexation, staff has met with members of the community, the Code Road Island property owners, the county planning department, the county code enforcement department, to try and iron out, figure out what exactly exists there now, what is legal, what is illegal, and try and take care of all of those situations prior to annexation. And staff, this, we'd like to point out that on the item for the Victorville Water District, that the map and legal description need to be revised in accord with LAFCO 2991 and/or LAFCO 3019. There is a small portion of that Code Road Island that is currently in the Water District boundaries. And we'd also, due to some last-minute corrections from LAFCO, we've revised those resolutions. That's what's been passed out to you tonight. There was a minor change to the title regarding the detachments for County Service Area 70 and the Fire Protection District. The resolutions have been modified for that in accordance with those. And also, the Plan for Services, there were some minor changes with regard to the districts that have been dissolved previously by the city.
Any questions, staff?
I have a question on this. I know that the island's relatively small here and everything, but there's a kind of a couple of things. A general policy issue is at any time we're going to begin to absorb these islands, whether it be the small Code Road one or Mountain View Acres or some of the others, there's always, there's an element of the people having done business for many years there in the county, and whether it was overlooked or under design or whatever, I would like to make sure that we get a certification from the county of any violations in writing from the county, put them in our possession so that folks aren't saying, well, we've been doing this for 30 years under the county, and now you've taken this over and you're going to say, no. Well, no, you were in violation for 30 years or 20 years. But, so we need that documentation to protect us as well, whether they, code enforcement of ours and theirs go around, or whatever they do, get that certification before you put the final paperwork into LAFCO on this thing. The other thing is with respect to this one, I'm not sure if it would, but it might bump into the final solutions that we would need to deal with in terms of the Yucca Loma-Green Tree issue. I'm not sure where those lines are going to be running around. I don't think that they would be involved in this at all, but I'm not 100% sure of that either. Certainly, one possibility would be to run down the river or something and hook around a different way. So I just would like to make sure that you get all your dots together and take your time before you submit them to LAFCO. They don't have their meeting until April, and even though we'd approve this one here, but make sure that we get all of that done in our workshop in a week here or so, to see if we can make sure that we're not bumping into ourselves in some of these other issues that may be close by.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chris. I will now open up the public hearing on Code Road Annexation. This is Victorville Water District Item Number Three and City Council Item Number Six. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the Code Road Annexation, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Very nice. I will close the public hearing. We have BWD 10-001 Resolution from the Water District, and we have, for the city, we have Resolution Number 10-001.
Move approval of both resolutions.
Item Number Five is the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Item Number Six is the Request to Award Change Order Number Two in the Amount of $33,400.
Move approval.
Second. City Council Agenda, we do have a revision to the agenda. It's the Item Number E under the Consent Calendar. Public Hearing, Item Number Three. Public Hearing, Call to Hear Arguments For or Against a Proposed Introduction, Awardance Number 2240. I will now open up the public hearing. I will now open up the public hearing on Item Number Three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item Number Three, please come to the podium. Item Number Three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, creating a new Chapter 10.10 within Title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code for the purpose of adopting updated electric service rules and rate schedules and related regulations, and changing the name of Title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Move introduction?
Second.
Item Number Four, Public Hearing called to hear arguments for or against the notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the 2010 overlay and reconstruct roadway project. I will now open up public hearing on Item Number Four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item Number Four? Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item Number Four? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on Item Number Four. I will retain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
Item Number Five, it's a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against adoption of Resolution Number 10-002. I will now call, I will call, open up the public hearing on Item Number Five. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item Number Five? Please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item Number Five? Hearing none, I will close Item Number Five.
Yeah, Cabral, if I might just point out for the record that the resolution of necessity does, within the body, contain the necessary findings and determinations of public necessity required for the resolution of necessity.
That'll be read into the record, yes. Your motion? Prove? We took action on Number Six and Seven. We'll go to Item Number Eight, which is your consent calendar.
For approval with the exemption of Item E?
Item Nine, we have already took action on that. We'll move to Item Ten. It's a request to accept the mid-year law enforcement contract cost increases and appropriate an additional $37,078 for law enforcement services.
For approval?
Superior Council, this item has been discussed for a long, long time. Last April, we requested funds as a part of the federal funding that was occurring to, if we could obtain funds for the extension of the Green Tree Boulevard or a road extension that would ultimately be the Green Tree extension, as a part of the H Road widening and the Yucca Loma Bridge improvement coming from Apple Valley. We've met with the Apple Valley staff, and we've met with county and sandbag staff many times in regard to this project as it relates to the Nisqually interchange, the primary number one priority of the city council, was the Nisqually interchange that has taken our resources and our time and energy. And recently, Apple Valley indicated they were moving forward and requested that they be able to add the improvement agreements with their engineering for the extension. The city of Victorville had had some preliminary discussions but had not budgeted monies for this. In order to assure that we would pay Apple Valley, there needs to be a cooperative agreement. We have presented information to the council on this matter individually after reading this agenda item. There's additional information that I understand that the council will want to have in hand before they make a determination on expenditure of funds, and staff is recommending that there be a continued item or a special meeting, which is appropriate, one week from tonight, for the staff to make a presentation that will include more information in regard to exactly where Apple Valley is on the engineering and the environmental study for the corridor and some potential costs from the city, what the cost will be nailed down to finalize the figures in a little more detail, and other information that's been requested by individual council persons. And therefore, unless there's a discussion by the council, we request this item be continued for one week or continued for a special meeting, and I don't know which is appropriate. You don't ask the attorney. I'm assuming it could be continued and be presented to the council a week from tonight.
We could actually adjourn this meeting to a workshop, if that's your preference, or we can just agendize it as a special meeting. There may be one, there may be one or two other items, so if you want to adjourn this item, it gives you a little more flexibility with respect to the agenda if you just adjourn this to five o'clock, if that's whatever time is appropriate for the council. Recommend five o'clock next Tuesday.
I got a comment before you leave it.
Go ahead.
I just want to make a general observation here that this touches on, again, the Yucca Loma Bridge over the river and the access to the freeway. It has always been contemplated for all the years that I've sat on this council, and that's over 20, that whatever flows over that bridge, when it began to be in discussion, was going to flow to the freeway interchange. It was not coming through town. That was the whole point of the idea, of the exercise. If there's any suggestion that Green Tree is part of the Yucca Loma corridor, then they're sadly mistaken. It is not part of the Yucca Loma corridor. That's not to say that a car coming over a bridge couldn't choose that route. That's, it's a free country, but we're going to design and feature this in such a way that the traffic flow is going to head to Nisqually and then to the freeway, in a Nisqually freeway. So, I am concerned about not only suggesting that Green Tree is part of the Yucca Loma corridor, but that Yates Road is part of the Yucca Loma corridor. They are not part of it, and matter of fact, I'm hoping that this council will take action to delist Green Tree as a truck route when we get the Nisqually interchange open and up and running out of that area. So, the traffic will go in that direction. Now, how we design and feature that is the wisdom of the Apple Valley and Victorville and the engineers and everybody else, but the language that is used there to suggest that Green Tree is part of the Yucca Loma corridor is, that is not correct in my mind, and I don't support that concept, and I don't support anything that would facilitate an extraordinary amount of traffic coming down Green Tree into the Green Tree intersection down there. That is not anything that I could support on this council.
And the meeting will be adjourned to, go ahead. I just wanted to comment that if you look at the intersection of Seventh Street, Mariposa, Palmdale Road, the overpass over the I-15, on ramp, off ramps, on to I-15, it is a nightmare right now. And to suggest dumping more traffic into that intersection, from my perspective, just simply doesn't make any sense because it can't accommodate, it can't accommodate it now. And so, I hope as we work through these things, and I've expressed this to Mr. McGlade before, I hope as we work through these things that you don't restrict the analysis just to getting the road across the river and across the railroad tracks. The traffic has got to go somewhere, and I agree with Councilman Rothschild, the best place from my perspective is the new Nisqually-Lamesa interchange, and I just cannot, in any configuration, imagine how you could ever put more traffic on to the Seventh Street, Mariposa, Palmdale Road intersection, which raises a question in my mind. If that did become the preferred route, who pays for the tens of millions of dollars of rebuild at that intersection? That's my comment. Thank you. Adjourn till next Tuesday? Item Number Twelve, there's a request to retain the services of an audit firm to conduct a forensic audit for the city's finances.
Ryan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, I did request this during council reports at our last council meeting of last year, and in thinking about this over the time since I've requested that, it has come to my attention that there are concerns that if we are the ones to, in essence, go out and retain these services, that somehow the results might be tainted in some way. And so, in order to make sure that we get a audit done that is completely 100% independent, I did some questioning of both the district attorney's office as well as the grand jury's office. The district attorney has no authority to do it, but the grand jury does. I have formally made a request that they perform this instead of us performing it. They have not yet responded. I think they're waiting to see what we do tonight, but I did want to bring this back before the council to formally vote on it, and then send the request to the grand jury that they be the ones to do it so that it's independent, whatever results come out of it, that the public and the citizens of Victorville can be assured that it was completely independent. So, that is, that's my motion, in essence, that we move forward with this and request that the grand jury perform the forensic audit.
I would second that, Ryan.
Would there be any cost for this?
Well, the cost, at this point in time, I don't, I don't believe we have. I do know that the grand jury has a budget for which they can perform these audits, and anything over that budget they can go to the county for, so it would go to the county board of supervisors, that's, that's what they've informed me of thus far. And that was another reason I considered going to them because I knew the cost associated with this, the fact that it's not a budgeted item, would be a concern, and so, going this route is, I think, the best option for all reasons.
Call for the vote.
My, oh, you did already? My opinion is, it's an opinion. It has no value whatsoever to this city, and I think it's a waste of money and everything else, so, no, we've got audits up to the year now. Excuse me, I'm changing, I just clicked, I got, no.
Presentation or report from council members?
I have none.
Thank you very much.
Going to adjourn to five o'clock these chambers, correct? Right? Next Tuesday.
Okay, Ryan.